Hello again, everyone, and welcome to another Around the Town of Branford with Henry and Frank. This is a news story we're doing today from the Branford Intermediate School, the Walsh Intermediate School. Today, we are covering for you in the Walsh Cafeteria, the Branford Board of Education meeting. It's March 22, 2023. The only item on the Board of Education's meeting agenda today is the appointment of superintendent. As you know, our present superintendent, Hamlet Hernandez, is stepping down as of June 30. He announced his retirement in August 2022. Ever since then, the Board of Ed has been in an intensive search for a new superintendent. Tonight, just minutes away, you will see the appointment made of the new Branford Public Schools superintendent. After the meeting is over, stay with us. We'll try to talk with Peter Burdon, the Board of Education chairman, as well as the new superintendent. The Board of Education itself, nine members served as the superintendent of the new superintendent of schools' search committee. And as I said, they worked on it for a long time, and the process they used, we'll talk about. But the Board of Education is made up, as I said, of nine members. The chairman is Peter Burdon. We also have Marie Watson, Timothy Rayner, Christina Cantu, John Prins, Laura Troidel, Meredith Gaffney, the Board of Education secretary, Megan DeLucia, and the vice chair of the Board of Education, Ellen Michaels. And as I said before, they served as the superintendent of schools' search committee. So stay with us. It's about quarter to 5 right now. The meeting will be starting in 15 minutes. And you know, you will see the brand-new Branford Public Schools superintendent appointment being made. So stay with us as our special news story from around the town of Branford with Henry and Frank continues. Okay, as I said, that very important and historic Branford Board of Education meeting, where the sole item on the agenda is the appointment of the new superintendent, is taking place just momentarily. I grabbed the chairman of the Board of Education. I'm going to speak to him just very briefly because he's got to get to that meeting. Peter Burdon, great to see you today.
Frank, it's great to see you as well.
Now, this is a very important, you know, step. As you know, you've been working very hard on it, you and the board. 2,600 students are, you know, in the system. So, Peter, I mean, I'm sure it was a long process, right?
It was a long process. It was an arduous process, and it was a very thorough process, Frank. We began the process actually thinking about it some time ago when Hamlet announced to us that he was not going to be seeking the renewal of his contract. We engaged a consultant to work with us. That consultant conducted numerous interviews, online surveys, to gain the community's understanding as to what sort of characteristics the community would like to see of a new superintendent. We have a 65-page report that encapsulates all of that. We also did a broad outreach. We received, I believe it was over 20 applicants for the position, yes.
That's huge.
It is huge. And from there, we had to kind of whittle it down. We did some vetting, and we came down to a final group of candidates. We interviewed five of those candidates. And it was a very tight race, and we ended up making the selection that we did.
Well, that's wonderful. I mean, you know, like you said, it was an arduous process. Also, I wanted to mention, right, that the report that Chairman Burdon just mentioned, it's available on the website for the public to read.
It is indeed. Yes, it is indeed.
Okay, well, thanks so much for speaking with us, and you know, we're looking forward to this, you know, very historic appointment, the new superintendent.
Thank you, Frank, and thanks for taking the time to interview us. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir. It's a pleasure. Okay, stay with us. The meeting's about to start. All right, everybody's here in the middle of the room. They're going to be taking their seats momentarily. There's Hamlet Hernandez is on the right there, and to the left is the new superintendent that's going to be appointed tonight and is going to start here in Branford on July 1. So they're talking. I'm sure they are going to have a lot to talk about over the next few months until Hamlet officially retires on June 30. There's some students coming into the room right now. The room is also filling up. There's RTM members here. There's members of the staff. We do have the entire administrative staff here for the superintendent that's going to be working with the new superintendent. Let me talk to Hamlet for a second. Hamlet, how are you, Hamlet?
How are you?
Good. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. How's everything going?
Good. Everything's going with me.
Good.
Just wanted to ask you about your future plans. What are you going to be doing after you step down June 30, sir?
Going to Disney. No, no, no.
Why not?
No, no, it's, I'm going to take a little time to relax, be with my family, and then I will be starting as the director for the Educational Leadership Program at Quinnipiac University. So I'm very, very excited about that.
That's where you're teaching now, right?
Yes, but I'm going to, I'm currently teaching there as an adjunct, and then I'm going to move in as the permanent director there.
That's wonderful. Let me shake your hand.
So I'm excited about that.
That's wonderful.
Do a little hunting and fishing, a little traveling. So it should be fun. Should be fun.
I know that right the 13 years you were here, there was, right, there was a lot going on.
There was a lot going on, Frank.
There still is. Look at the school that you helped build.
Yes.
Magnificent.
The community should be very, very proud of all their accomplishments in education, and I hope, under Dr. Trandberg's leadership, I'm sure that they will continue.
Yes, sir. I am too. I am too.
So it's an exciting time.
Yeah, it's an exciting time, yeah.
And I'll see you shortly, right, with the RTM meetings?
Yeah, Thursday night. We'll be there.
Yeah. Don't beat me up too many times, all right?
All right, sir. All right.
We'll talk.
Thank you very much, Hamlet, for everything. That's Hamlet Hernandez, for 13 years, our superintendent, and now stepping down on June 30. The room is filling with students. There's a lot of students behind our camera. Looks like they're going to be singing a song, so it should be kind of a happy occasion here. Our first selectman is here, Jamie Cosgrove. We have the other people in the administrative office here with us. We have Don Neal, who's the CEO of the Branford Public Schools, and we also have, we also have Assistant Superintendent Sexton. So I believe the meeting is about to start, so let's go up to the head table and the Board of Education chairman, Peter Burdon.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Branford Board of Education's special meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 22. It is 5:00 p.m. We will begin with the roll call of the Board of Education members. Ellen Michaels.
Present.
Meredith Gaffney.
Present.
Christina Cantu.
Present.
Megan DeLucia.
Present.
John Prins.
Present.
Let's see, Maria Watson. Maria Watson, please.
Present.
Laura Troidel. I believe Tim Rayner is online.
Present, online.
Excellent. From Central Office, Superintendent Hernandez.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Rachel Sexton.
Present.
And COO, Don Neal.
Present.
Thank you all, and welcome. Welcome, everybody, to this historic meeting. Fitting with the event, I am so glad to be able to, we're able to have a student presentation of the music makers. We're all lined up behind unfortunate board sards. Mr. Martin, welcome. I don't know if you want to introduce your student participation.
Ted, we're on tape.
Always ready. We're always ready.
Great. You can be on tape, group. So this group is actually a choir that is going to be traveling to Disney World in about three weeks. It's comprised of 10th through 12th graders. They're about 50% of the choir students we have at the high school. Many of them were just either pastor crew for the musical that just closed on Sunday, where we did a performance over the week for about 2,600 people. And we did also a small elementary school performance showcase for all the elementary schools. So they've been working really hard this week, but we thought it was really very important for us to be here today and perform. As you can see, some of them are still in their softball uniforms. They're all running from tennis and softball in their jobs today because we value this, and we're very happy to be here. So we're going to perform a song called Baba Yetu, and it's going to have a few soloists, and then we are just excited to be here and perform for you. Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Bing Booni Yetu Yetu Amina Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Booni Na La Ko Ele Chukuswe. Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Bing Booni Yetu Yetu Amina Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Booni Na La Ko Ele Chukuswe. Muju Bele Ochabule Chetu Nu Na Koitachi Oba Samehe Akosai Yetu Waa. Muju Seika Muju Chiki Kati Ka Ma Jaleku Akidi Na Amina Yele. Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Bing Booni Yetu Yetu Amina Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Booni Na La Ko Ele Chukuswe. Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Bing Booni Yetu Yetu Amina Baba Yetu Yetu Liye Booni Na La Ko Ele Chukuswe.
Thank you all. Hang on, Mr. Martin. Don't let me all just stand. I just want to thank you all. I know you guys all have very busy schedules, and I see so many of the faces that I saw this weekend from the musical. I know you guys have been going full bore, and we do appreciate you taking the time to come out here tonight. Thanks for this evening. It's been very, very special. Thank you. And I also wanted to just mention, so I saw Sunday's performance, and I had the opportunity afterwards to hear many of the testimonials of you provided to Mr. Martin. And I can tell you, from Board of Education's perspective, knowing that you're able to make that kind of connection with somebody in the building is so important to us. And so, thank you. Thank you for opening up your hearts and your minds to that and for sharing that with the entire community. Thank you. Mr. Martin, you deserve a round of applause, too, because don't miss it. That kind of response from your students, that's a real testament to you. Thank you. Again, thanks very much for coming out. So at this point in time, on our agenda, we will entertain a report from the Superintendent Search Committee. Vice Chair Ellen Michaels, please.
Thank you. I am pleased to provide the following report of the search committee. The search for superintendent began shortly after Superintendent Hernandez announced his retirement in August. The board was appointed as a search committee. Our first task was to hire a consultant to assist in the search and candidate identification process. After interviewing several teams, the board hired Robert Ferguson of McPherson and Jacobson, LLC. During the months of November, December, and January, Mr. Ferguson and McPherson and Jacobson, LLC facilitated a total of 17 public meetings as well as conducting online surveys and various phone calls to Branford stakeholders. The stakeholder responses assisted the board in developing a candidate profile, that is, the qualities the community desired of a successful candidate. Simultaneously, the board widely advertised the open position. After an intensive vetting process of more than 20 candidates who applied, the board decided to conduct in-person interviews with five of the candidates. After conducting the in-person interviews, the search committee voted to recommend Dr. Christopher Trandberg for appointment as superintendent, commencing July 1, 2023. Dr. Trandberg is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction for the Darien Public Schools, a position he has held since March of 2020. Prior to his work in Darien, Dr. Trandberg held administrative positions as the Assistant Superintendent of the Bramby Public Schools, Principal of Avon High School, Assistant Principal of Simsbury High School, and Director of Performing Arts for the Simsbury Public Schools. Before his work as a public school administrator, Dr. Trandberg enjoyed several years as an elementary music teacher in Connecticut, New Jersey, and in Ohio. With over 20 years of experience in public education, Dr. Trandberg has a history of exhibiting passion and commitment to providing access to learning for all students. Through building professional learning cultures, providing high-quality learning experiences for teachers and leaders, and developing sustainable and innovative plans for continuous improvement, Dr. Trandberg collaboratively works with all stakeholders to enhance learning communities. Dr. Trandberg earned his PhD in Educational Policy Research and Administration from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. He also holds a master's degree from the University of Harvard and a bachelor's degree from Walden Wallace University. He's also a graduate of the Sacred Heart University Superintendent Certification Program. Dr. Trandberg is an active presenter and consultant in the areas of strategic planning and organizational improvement, curriculum development, measurement and evaluation, teacher collaboration, and various topics in music education. Thank you.
Thank you for that comprehensive report, Ms. Michaels. At this time, I will entertain a motion with respect to the amendment. Ms. Michaels, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Christopher Trandberg as superintendent of schools effective July 1, 2023, subject to the following conditions. Number one, satisfactory completion of all statutory requirements concerning the hiring of Board of Education employees. And two, Dr. Trandberg's agreement to the terms and conditions set forth in the proposed contact of employment between the board and Dr. Trandberg. And I further move that the Board Chair, Peter Burdon, be authorized to finalize and execute such proposed employment contract on behalf of the board.
Thank you for that motion. Ms. Gaffney?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you for the second. The motion has been made. Do you resecond it? At this point in time, we will open up the motion for discussion and comment. Superintendent Hernandez, do you have any comments?
Yes. Thank you, Peter. I just had the pleasure of spending some time with Dr. Trandberg. It was very, very enjoyable, and I just want to personally say to you, Chris, that you are welcome, open arms. We congratulate you. It's wonderful to see your grandmother, your mother, and your aunt, and Jason here, your partner. You will find that Branford Public Schools is an amazing place. The strength of our school district is in staff, and the gift that you will be inheriting is our power children, which you just saw. And the additional fun that you will have, and I use the word "fun" because you will have moments that the job feels daunting, but the fun is watching the staff and the students interact under your leadership and continually grow and improve. I wish you the very, very best, and as I mentioned to you, you can always call me anything that I can do to support you. I will do. Good luck.
Thank you, Superintendent Hernandez. I just have a couple of brief comments before we go ahead and vote. When Superintendent Hernandez announced to the board that he would not seek the extension of his then-contract, which ends this June, the district and the world were in a different place. We were in the midst of a global pandemic, the likes of which has been experienced behind the years. At that time, he committed to the board and the district to steer the district out of those troubled waters and into a safe harbor. He delivered on that promise. We now see the harbor light just off our map. Superintendent Hernandez, we thank you for your commitment to the district and your service. We honor your professionalism and integrity. After Superintendent Hernandez announced his formal retirement in August, the board earnestly began its search for his successor. With the very able guidance of Mr. Ferguson and McPherson and Jacobson, the board conducted an extensive and exhaustive search for his successor. A vital component of that search process was to listen from you, the community, staff alike, what qualities you wanted to see in your superintendent. You heard the search committee's report. The search committee unanimously concluded that Dr. Trandberg possesses those qualities. We therefore honor and privilege that we decided to join the field. As the board and the district moved forward, we will be armed with guided by new tools, an updated strategic adherence plan, facility study, job B sliding, and an updated security plan, just to name a few. Dr. Trandberg, we look forward to receiving you on board, live, cast off our lines, and together chart our course of new orders and our quest for continuous improvement. We are so pleased that you joined the field today by the family, the kids, the mom, the grandma, and the aunt. Wonderful. With that, the board is ready to vote. I call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Peter, am I saying a few words?
Yes.
Okay. You stole some of mine. Honored and privileged. Those were my words to say, to say thank you.
You'll get the votes.
Honored and privileged were my words, and I'll add humbled to that. I'm just so pleased to be joining. Years of theater have trained me well. Honored and privileged were my words, Peter, so thank you that we share those sentiments, and I would add humbled to that. One of the things that stood out in the profile were teachers are the backbone of the community. And for me, teachers are the background and the backbone of our lives. And thank you to my family for being here, my mom, my aunt, my grandmother who came up from New Jersey today, and my husband Jason. They are all some of the most important teachers that I've had in my life, so it's great that they are here. People often ask in educational leadership if you miss teaching. And my answer is, no, I don't miss teaching because I haven't stopped. This role as an executive leader, as an assistant superintendent, as a superintendent, as a program director, wherever we are, we are teaching. Who our students are is what changes, and that happens through listening and learning to each other. And then after we listen and learn and decide where we need to go, we build and we share. And I look forward to doing that with all of you for many years to come. So thank you.
Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to make a really heartfelt thank you to Carrie. She really, quite honestly, went above and beyond helping the search committee do its work, and we could not have done it without you, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We really appreciate it. I also want to thank my fellow board members. You all put in innumerable hours during the search process. You took this matter very seriously. You did it in a very thoughtful and careful manner. Thank you. I appreciate all the time that you all put into it. I know many of you on this board, you were also sitting on the search committee, so you had those obligations. Starting to stigmatize it here, it's planning committee, as well. So you had those obligations going on at the same time simultaneously, and that would be Laura Christie, John, and Megan. I think you guys really took out a lot of work, and we appreciate that sometimes, thank you guys. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You can have some fun.
Salute.
Excellent service. Laura, a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections? We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I'll be really.
The selection process for the new superintendent of schools in Branford is now complete. The chairman of the Board of Education, Peter Burdon, has now ended the meeting. It was kind of a short meeting. Great entertainment there by the high school music makers under the direction of Mr. Martin. And I'm going to try to speak to our new superintendent. As of July 1, Christopher Trandberg. As Peter Burdon said, he's here tonight with his family. They were in the first row there. We got some close-ups of him as he was being voted in as the new superintendent. So our program here, Around the Town of Branford with Henry and Frank, a news story continues. So stay with us. We're going to try to speak to our new superintendent, you know, as of July 1. Stay with us. Stay with us. There's a conference going on up there. You see our first selectman, Jamie Cosgrove, is there on the left, and then we have the new, as of July 1st superintendent, Christopher Tranberg. To the right of him is the Board of Finance Chairman, Joe Mooney. And then, of course, right behind Joe is Chairman of the Board, Peter Burdon. And there is some cookies here for people that would like to partake of some drink and some food. And this was a very positive meeting, and I can tell that everybody is very relieved because this was, as Peter said, a very arduous process that started back in August.
Ooh, sorry, that was loud. Please, sorry. There is a good top on the side, so please feel free to help yourself and enjoy the nuts and the festivities as well. Thank you.
There was a little bit that we heard about the new superintendent, Christopher Tranberg. He was, he's coming to us as the Assistant Superintendent from Darien Public Schools. He's held that office now for three years, and he came to Darien Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, from Granby, where he also served as Assistant Superintendent. And then it was stated too that he has also been a high school principal in Avon. He was an assistant high school principal in Simsbury, and as I said, he's now coming from Darien. So hopefully we'll be able to speak with him. So stay with us. Our special news story around the town of Branford with Henry and Frank continues. Okay, I'm with Joe Mooney. He's the chairman of the Branford Board of Finance. Joe, we got to meet the new superintendent. What's your first impression?
Yeah, very nice gentleman. Dr. Chris seems very, very nice, and I look forward to working with him. So.
He seems like he has a lot of experience and, you know, will be, will be very good.
Yeah, I agree. So first impressions are good, so we wish him the best of luck.
Thank you for being with us. Joe Mooney, Branford Board of Finance Chair. Thank you, sir.
Take care, Frank.
All right, you too. Try to talk to some more people here. We're here at the Francis Walsh Cafeteria. If you're just tuning in, we just appointed, the Board of Education just appointed the new superintendent as of July 1st, Christopher Tranberg, joining the district from the Darien Public Schools as an Assistant Superintendent. He's now coming to Branford. First Selectman Cosgrove is right here. Jamie, good, Jamie. How did you, so anyway, right, the process is just finished, right?
Yes.
I mean, we finally have, you know, it took a year, right? We have, we have an upcoming superintendent, July 1st. I just wanted to get your first impressions on Chris.
Yeah, I mean, this was the first, I met the doctor and welcomed here to Branford, and over the years, I think we've accomplished a lot of great things within our town, including our school district, working together. So I look forward to kind of continuing those, those efforts and for making the investments in our schools and for the benefit of our students.
Jamie, I just wanted to compliment you because right back in, I think it was October 2013, when you were first running for first selectman, right? You said that you wanted a new Walsh intermediate school because the open space was not conducive to scholarship.
Yeah. Well, I mean, this is a, at the time, you may recall, Frank, they were, the Board of Education was contemplating a couple of school projects, this, this project being one, which, as you know, and I'm sure many in the community know, this, this building, the previous building, I should say, had been discussed for many, several years.
Decades.
Decades, right. So there were, there were a number of people that had come before me and identified the need. Came in and certainly being a district in a, Hamlet and I, I remember meeting in 2013 and coming to an agreement and understanding that this is a building that serves our entire district, right? It's not, and so there, there was a need there to address it, and, you know, we had to work together to kind of maintain that commitment through the levels of approvals and funding and grant applications. And it was, it was a process, but we got through it, and I think it was a successful project.
Now, also, Jamie, right, the Board of Education has moved their office, right, from the old post office to this very school, right?
So part of the project was to incorporate the Board of Education offices within this, this building.
So at the time that I heard tonight, right, from Peter Burdon, that 20 applicants had, you know, asked to be considered for the new superintendent, I mean, part of the appeal had to have been, right, their new office, this building, and, you know, the idea that the town really cares for education and wants to keep it, you know, up as it should be.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly think that was contributed to the number of applicants.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, absolutely. And that's due to you, you know, with this great building that really, it came out really fantastic. I was talking to the, right, the permanent building committee chair, right, Peter Bonka, and I think he said this came in, what, under budget by what, how many million? Do you know, Jamie?
Yeah, it's still being, it's still, the numbers are reconciled, and we're still waiting for some response back from the state as in terms of change order requests, and that'll calculate the final grant application for the town. But yes, it was a project that did, retained under that budget.
Under budget, it came in and it came out fantastic. Well, great to talk to you today, sir.
Nice talking to you. Thanks. Good seeing you.
You too. Okay, once again, let's try to grab Chris for just a second here if we can. He's busy talking to Hamlet, so. Chris, can you? Chris, can you? Chris, Chris, can you?
Sure. I won't take your mic this time.
That's all right. You can take it. Take it now, sir.
I can take it now.
Take it now, take it. That's good, that's good. You know, it's, it's very heavy holding that, so it's a nice break for me. Anyway, I just want to, you know, say hello. It's very nice to meet you.
Great to meet you. Thank you.
This is a public access program we do in Branford here. It's around the town of Branford. Come down, Frank. And we're, you know, we're here today, and this is, this is a big news story. You know, you're, you're appointed after the, after, you know, the law process. So, so I just wanted to ask you about your own interests. Now, I mean, the research that I did on you, it seems like you've, you've got a big background in the arts, especially in music, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, so, I mean, when you assume the office July 1st, I mean, my question is, I mean, do you, do you plan to expand, you know, the music offerings in the, in the district?
Well, based on how we started the evening tonight, it's exciting to see that the arts are a valued part of the community, and it was great to see students as part of the celebration. I definitely want to learn more about what's there. It's, music, music saved my life, I think, in lots of ways in, in high school. It's, that was where I found a lot of joy that helped me come to school every day and do well. And so I would love to hear from our students and hear from staff and the community about where they'd like to see programs expand. But for sure, it's a passion of mine.
That's great to hear. I was talking to our first selectman just a moment ago, sir, and, you know, this whole, the reconstruction of this building, basically was due to him. There was a lot of complaints about this building and open space concept, and so, you know, he got the grants and he did the rebuilding. So my question is, you know, since, since you're coming to us from Darien, that's one of the best school systems in America. I mean, how does, how does this building compare to the, you know, the buildings, the school buildings in Darien?
Well, I'll tell you, we have wonderful resources in Darien, but our middle school would be jealous if they saw this facility. So this is a job well done. It's a gorgeous building, and it's certainly, it's certainly welcoming for sure.
You got, you got your new office here, you know, for.
Yeah, I just saw it. Yes.
They just moved here.
Yes, high ceilings, fantastic.
The old, the old place was an old post office building, you know, that was old.
Yeah, I'm sure it had some, some special charm though, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. It's great to meet you.
Thank you. It's great to meet you as well. I'm sure we'll be talking more.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Christopher Tranberg, our new superintendent as of July 1st. So anyway, it's been great to be with you today as Around the Town in Branford with Henry and Frank brought you our special news program, the appointment by the Board of Education of the new Branford Public Schools superintendent. I'm Frank Twohill, and for Henry Pond, until next time, good night.